Good morning. We're here at Eastland County today live and we are pleased to have Eastland Superintendent Jason Cochran from the Eastland Independent School District with us and publisher H.B. O'Brien from the Eastland County Newspapers and myself, Amy O'Brien-Glynn. And we're here to find out a little bit what's going on up at Eastland Independent School District and the campuses. Before we get started, I wanted to just thank one of our local friends and business partners, Radio Shack and Eastland Office Supply, Richard Barron, who's a good friend and neighbor to us, helped us out with these mics. We had one problem with one of our mics and so he's helped us get situated for today. But anyway, I'd like to go ahead and welcome our guest and get started and just find out what's happening.
Good morning. Good morning. I appreciate y'all having me. This is an exciting endeavor for the newspaper to start broadcasting live. I'm sure there's a lot of people excited to get immediate impact in a different source of media. So it's neat to see us venturing out into a different avenue. Appreciate being here.
Thank you for coming Superintendent. And should we assume that this could be an update on the things you have done and the things you hope to do at Eastland School?
Well, absolutely. You know, anything's open for discussion. This has been an amazing past six, seven, eight months since I arrived. It's been hit the ground running since June. Got to tell you, this has been one of the best decisions me and my family have made. The community of Eastland has welcomed us with open arms and having kids in school here, it's a neat place to raise a kid. You wouldn't want to do it anywhere else.
I agree. I agree. And I think that everyone has, from my perspective, there has been some change and just a change of feeling at the schools as the new administration comes in. Nothing that was wrong with the past administration, but we just, it's just kind of exciting and a feel of, you know, what's next and what can we expect to improve at our school now?
Well, I appreciate that. I think you'll see all administration and teachers especially, you know, there's a passion for students. You know, one of the challenges any type of leadership transition has is cautiously approaching change. You know, something that may seem like a small ripple of a decision that either comes from my office or administrative office may be a wave to some and you have to be aware of that. And you don't want it to get in the way of everyday learning. But it is challenged because, you know, each leadership is different and you make different decisions, you manage in a different style, and it's not reflective, positive or negative on previous administration. I just have to manage the way I feel, the way I feel that, you know, God has blessed me with the talents to do and also do what's right for kids. But the most amazing opportunity is I'm surrounded by people that share the same passion. And it's been a busy transition, but it's been an easy transition because of the people I get to work with.
Jason, I might throw in a little history here. I know you showed me some with the original planning on the existing facilities. I'm working with some local people on updating and because I'm sort of the senior citizen here, I date back to when Douglas School was still operating here. I have my chair in my office and we're working on a feature story about that history and that background, which I feel is very important for us to preserve. It's a part of our heritage. And you will take us into the new era and we certainly welcome you here to do that.
I appreciate it. Glad to be part of it.
So tell us some of the, just I know you're managing three campuses plus other facilities. So tell us some of the, what's going on at the campuses or changes?
Well, you know, we're, you started at Seibert Elementary. We'll start from the ground up. You know, there's a lot of opportunity that is going on at Seibert. One of the neat things you can see is we were in the middle of finishing a joint project with the city. You know, I was able to catch the tail end of that, which was actually the groundbreaking of a very long process where we applied with a grant for FEMA to build a tornado shelter. You know, that was a process that began with Mr. Hughes and Becca Hallmark Assistant Superintendent and as well as huge support from Mary Jones as they wrote a grant to get this project funded. It is a matched portion grant where FEMA is picking up between 50 and 75% of the cost. They handle most of the costs of the facility, just not the infrastructure that you put inside. They're funding the safe portion of it and we are allowed to utilize the infrastructure to best suit our needs. So we're in the middle of that project. That's actually, I encourage us to do a news story on that next week. We're going to inflate the inside of the dome. It's, the exterior is just about finished. They will inflate from the inside up and then start sealing it from the inside out over the next 14 days.
That should be interesting.
We're going to utilize the inside as a music room, special ed facilities, as well as a PE gymnasium area.
Also, I learned something today. I didn't realize it was actually utilized and it was just sitting there waiting for something to happen.
No, that's been the benefit of it and what has really been, justifies the hard work putting into a matched process like that. I say matched FEMA, FEMA funds a portion of it. We work along with our city on a joint venture. You know, time and effort and there's a reimbursement process where they're going to fund. I think in this phase of the project, you're looking between 57 and 63% of the project is funded by FEMA on a reimbursed type scale. But the things we get to add on to the middle, we pay for. But you're getting to build a facility at a fraction of the costs as you normally would that will benefit our children. So that's, that's the up to date new thing that's happening at Seibert that is pretty evident on the exterior. Now, what changes the appearance and what new programs you have to offer?
Tell us a little bit about middle school and high school.
Middle school, they continue to go full steam ahead. You know, middle school's a unique age. It's one of those things that if you're not a middle school teacher naturally, then you're going to struggle being a middle school teacher because that, the middle school child is a dynamic challenge in itself. But they, they've had a successful year in and out of the classroom, not only in sports and extracurricular, but UIL, academic UIL, they blew the top off it. Those kids have done a great job this year and continued a good job. You know, the teachers there work hard and are working, making our kids ready for the next step as they go into high school and approach graduation, becoming a productive citizen. High school, you know, we had, that's where I think you'll see a lot of impact. And I hate to use the word change, but we did have personnel change last year and everything from your head coaching staff to a large retirement of teachers last year and myself being new as well and a new principal and assistant principal. So that there's, try to be as consistent as possible, but you have a new leadership team and they can't recreate things they haven't seen before. You know, so one of the neat opportunities we will see and have seen, kind of a little bit faster than we expected it to be, but when the board hired me, you know, I was, you don't hear it out of every superintendent, but I said, you know, I don't believe every student is college bound. And I believe they need to be college ready. But we, part of our goal is to make sure that they can walk across that stage and have an option. If they want to go to college, we need to prepare them for college. But the other obligation is we need to be able to make them trainable to where they can be productive citizens in our community, whether that's licensed to do a trait or a skill or academically prepared to enter a trade school. I say that to say we've kind of been able to go a little bit faster than what I thought we'd be. But Mr. Waltner has worked closely with Ranger Junior College or Community College to add some certifications to our current Ag and Cape programs. Starting this semester, we're actually working on a dual credit welding program where these kids are getting certified to be productive welders or working towards that certification with Ranger College.
Oh, that's right.
So that's just an example of the route we're talking about. You can take a college-bound child and turn them into a young adult that's certified to go out and make a living should college not be in their future, but they're still intellectually capable of being very successful. So you'll see that, those programs being emphasized as well as continuing what I believe is one of the best dual credit programs in the state. I mean, the percentage of students we have that are going to graduate with their associate's degree is amazing. And my three will be on that track as well because it is a financial savings.
No, it is a great program. And I know that, oh, I know Councilor Ms. Coffee, the former administrator has got, had worked hard to get that in place. And the colleges, giving credit to these colleges to work with us.
Absolutely.
But I mean, it's such a savings and just, it seems like I've experienced a lot and one of my own as well has actually done, actually it seems like he does even better in these college programs. They're maybe not quite as traditional as the classroom he was used to. He's done very well in that. And so I think there may be other students that can thrive where they maybe have questioned whether they would do well in college, you know, so.
Absolutely. The more opportunity you have for that type of learning or collaboration to take place between two entities is amazing. And we are blessed to be sitting right in the middle of two phenomenal universities that are willing to work with their communities. Cisco and Ranger have been a blessing to be a part of.
Jason, we keep hearing the possibility of a new high school stadium. You want to tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. Let me, let me kind of back up and kind of tell you what got us to the point where we are looking at calling a bond this February to work on growth within our district. You know, we mentioned earlier, and you and I have talked on several occasions, when I first arrived to town, I got asked several times, you know, take a look at facilities, take a look at facilities, what's your vision there?
That was our first impression of you, that you were concerned with facilities.
Well, you know,
As well as kids, of course.
Absolutely. And I have a philosophy, you know, we have beautiful historic facilities. We also, there's, there's a obligation to understand the facilities you have because you're going to be managing those. You know, you look at with a $9 million budget and a large percentage of that, 70 to 80% being taken up of salaries, it's not a lot of money to manage from that point on. However, you know, I have some philosophy that if, if we don't respect what it looks like on the outside, the kids have a hard time respecting what happens on the inside of our facilities. So, you know, I felt the community's inquiries when they kept asking and then instead of just having a knee jerk reaction, we did a, a facilities audit, you know, boundary to boundary, floor to ceiling, had entity come in and take a look so they could tell us, what are you managing? What do we have? What's the life expectancy? What are the challenges we're going to face? And in that, you found that, you know, the cost to manage the facilities, the board has done a very good job at maintaining and not putting that burden on a taxpayer as far as managing the facilities is concerned. However, any major infrastructure changers, for example, we talked about the college readiness piece. House Bill 5 requires that we add a lot of certifications to our programs to provide those opportunities for the kids and current infrastructure limits some of the programs.
I can see that, yeah.
So we have to look at what modifications we would have to do in a secondary program to make that feasible. That's where you kind of get into some settings of the Pandora's Box type thing is, we look at some renovations, it will domino your costs on a 1926 building to where you have to look at value. Is it worth looking at your current infrastructure? Can it be better utilized developmentally for kids if you were to build an offsite facility? So those are the management discussions I was having with the board, giving the options. And I thought the board was very wise. They said, we're not going to put anything out there unless we're hearing from the community that that's a direction we want to go. We had several kind of get to know me meetings with K-12 parents and one, you know, an overwhelming theme again kept coming up saying facilities, 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 to the point where, you know, a group of parents got together, had prominent community members come speak in open session and said to the board, you know, now's the time. We'd like you to look at what it would take to pass a bond. We started looking at this, gathered some information in November, December, and have landed on a package that would build a high school, an athletic facility, realigned some programming with what, you know, the hill, how we would utilize that and then do some safety concerns at Seibert and address some of those as well.
Well, you know, that's such a big issue for the community and all. And, you know, I think, you know, I've told you this from the beginning. I mean, there's a lot of historic and emotional feelings that come around when you talk about moving schools or moving, you know, where historically all the Eastland graduates have graduated from. How, how would you, how would, what are some of the ideas that y'all have in place to, to kind of preserve the history of the school?
Well, let me kind of take you, we have it down to a four tiered process that we're looking at addressing. One, build, building a facility that can adequately meet the secondary needs of our kids as we prepare them for the future. Two is having a joint venture as we build an athletic complex where we can host events with an eight lane track and, you know, share the infrastructure of a high school that would cut the cost of building that type facility. You know, we run into a lot of challenge with Maverick Stadium. Even though there's a lot of history there, you're still building a floodplain and we're dealing with the same dynamic issues that we, we were facing, as I mentioned, in the high school. You know, renovations out there can be very expensive, but you also have to make sure that you responsibly, very, you're very responsible when you make those decisions because it is in a floodplain. And I hear the stories of people seeing it four feet underwater or one gentleman said he actually tried to catch a fish out there on the 50 yard line while it was underwater one day. So you've got to be cautious at what you put into that type of facility. So, you know, we would look at building the offsite high school and along with an athletic complex, but then that raises the question is what would we do with the hill, the middle school and elementary? You know, one of the unique opportunities I think that that presents us is a way to developmentally serve our kids at an appropriate level. You know, we would look at taking what is the middle school and moving fifth grade off of Seibert and making that a fifth and sixth grade center and then taking the high school and making that a seventh and eighth grade center. Developmentally, this is a phenomenal opportunity to serve kids in this manner, but it also, you know, lowers the numbers where we can utilize the parts of the building that are more accessible and more appropriate for the kids and have opportunity to grow as we grow as well in those areas. Seibert, one of the things we're looking at doing down there is addressing some of the safety issues. You know, we do a good job with our staff now trying to make sure the kids are safe. There's a lot of exits and entrances at Seibert. We would want to do a storefront area on the, over that first awning when you walk in, have, you know, a receptionist there that monitors the entrance to and from the building with security features on there to keep our kids safe at Seibert as well. So we're not planning to deutilize any of our current existing facilities, just use them developmentally appropriate and then take the opportunity to build a new high school that can utilize as well.
Well, it looks like by doing that, but actually the ability to expand would be great in all the schools. Is that?
Absolutely. And that's in consideration as well. People look at, you know, in, in your mid to small size school district, you know, there's talk of consolidation, those type of things. But there's also, there's also growth. You know, we've had considerable growth this year, not larger than years in the past, but larger than last year. You know, we're up around 1,100 kids, you know, pushing a little higher than that. So we're up about 10%. And if, and if that growth continues, we want to be able to absorb that K-12. And by doing this, it creates an opportunity. Should districts consolidate over the next 10 years, there's a wave effect. You know, we all have open enrollment and based on your programming in this area, not in Texas, but in this area, we all have open enrollment. So there are kids that may want to come to our area. And I, you know, we have the teachers and we have the community and I don't think there's any reason why we shouldn't be a destination district for anybody that wants to come to this area.
I agree.
Have we juggled any figures yet?
What, what we're looking at doing is, is doing a project that would cost a $2 million bond, what you're looking at. We are, we are at a very low tax rate. We're a dollar four. We have no INS, no interest in sinking debt. We have, any debt we've incurred, we've incurred through loans. And we would look at, and that comes out of our maintenance and operation budgets each year. We will look at moving a portion of those debts over to the INS side through this bond to free up operations money. So we do have enough money to responsibly manage new facilities. What that impact would be on the average family in Eastland, you know, the average household here is about a $67,000 household and you're looking at, that's about $200 a year, less than $20 a month for the average family member. You know, the, the overall impact, that is a, a 40 cent bond for 30 years. Put it in perspective, you know, Gorman, they're at a buck 34. This would put us at a dollar 44. But you look at what you get for the size of community, we would get a considerable larger amount of money to have further growth than what smaller districts get for that money. Areas like Millsap that are a buck 30, buck 66 and are at a much larger tax base than we are. But you're looking at a 40 cent, 40 cent tax increase.
Excuse me. The 40 cent, say again. I didn't hear that.
Twenty eight and eight is a 40 cent tax increase on the school tax side.
Right.
For, for the INS piece, which, you know, we have, for a $50,000 house, your impact is going to be $140. $75,000 house, you're looking at 240. $100,000 house is $340 a year. Keep in mind, if you're 65 years or older, you know, this has zero impact. You know, you're on our homestead up to your house and 20 acres and you're, you're frozen. It's not going to have an impact on, on the house you have homesteaded as well. So I've talked to, I've spoken to several people in the community and, you know, that, that changes a little bit of perspective on the people with the fixed income. You know, they get to make a decision that can have direct impact on not only potentially their family coming here, but their grandkids that are in the school system as well and respecting that their, their taxes will be frozen. You know, they're on a fixed income and, you know, they're both counts, but the impact will be different for 65 and over as well.
I think that's important.
Absolutely.
Yeah. We talked about the sports facility that would be part of this plan at the new high school. That means training facilities, stadium?
You're looking at a stadium with an eight lane track. You're looking at making sure that we have a stage that is UIL capable to host events. Don't, don't get fooled if anybody ever says, well, if you can host these playoff games, you'll pay for your facilities. That, that, that's not a correct formula. In fact, that, that a couple of teachers have brought to my attention, they're 100% right, is that anytime we can host a playoff or a UIL type activity, you're going to bring about 1,000 people to our community that's going to eat.
All right. Well, as we move forward, talking about changes and possible new facilities, what do you feel like some of the district's challenges would be with this moving forward?
Well, I think, I think you face several different challenges. We all know that we want to do what's best for our kids. And we also know that we want to respect the traditions and the history in our community, especially when they're tied to some amazing facilities. I think personally, one of the challenges I'm facing is, you know, there, there may be a perspective that this is the new superintendent's vision to come in and just all of a sudden, you know, build a resume and come in. You know, that is anything but the truth. You know, it's actually easier not to do this. But it's, 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 it's the right, it's the right move for kids. And the, what, what allows me to sleep comfortably at night is the fact that the community has spoken to look into this and to say, you know, what does it take to, to make our facilities match the passion that we have for kids? And what will it take to make Eastland ISD's facilities adequate for a destination district? I keep referring to that, but I've heard that time and time again and see it in the pride we take in Eastland as a city and Eastland ISD as a school district. The other thing is, you know, it's a large number. When, when you're dealing with taxes, when you're dealing with an impact of a couple hundred dollars a month and you're, you're dealing with a time period where school districts or our community that has seen tax values increase. I think there's a common misconception that we're raising the taxes in the years past in the school district. You know, it's, the, the value is considered off of the, I mean, the taxes are considered off the value of the property in years past. We are looking at a tax increase with a bond. But the values that our, our community has had in the past has had not impacted the school district in a way people think they, think they do. You know, it's a complex formula, but the easiest way to explain it is you have your local contribution and your state contribution. When your local contribution goes up, which they had the last couple of years here with the values increasing, your state contribution goes down. So even with last year's increase, we're functioning on a smaller budget than the years past because the state contribution is less. So, but the reality is, that doesn't make it feel better. The community still has had to pay more. So instead of just paying more for a, a value that's on a piece of paper, we're looking at paying more for an opportunity for the kids and for a, a long-term impact that will be valuable when it comes to what we get to, the product we get to allow our kids to become. The timeframe and, you know, what, what you'll see from this point on and how do we get the information out? You know, we, I've been speaking everywhere I can to talk to various community members, organizations, committees, you know, had a lunch the other day where I invited every pastor in our area to come down and sit, not, not for a sales pitch, but for a factual discussion. You know, so when people have a question about it, they know the facts. After we call this bond, should the board go down that direction in February, you know, the, a community leadership committee will take the reins and they'll, they'll take the marketing piece from that point on. And, but I'd be available for factual conversations.
So how would, how would people get hold of you or board members to discuss as if they
Well, stop a board member in Walmart or anywhere they see them, but I would say give them a break when they're shopping.
Yeah.
But I'm, I want to function as transparent as possible. Feel free to stop by and visit with me at the office anytime. I would call ahead because I'm not an office person. I'm on the campuses most of the time or out in the community. But my office number's 631-5120, 631-5120. If you have any questions, make an appointment to come by and see me. I say make an appointment because I'm not usually there. But if you stop by, it's open door. Just come down, sit down and then show you what we're looking at. We don't have to agree on everything, but I want you to be able to have the facts to make the decision where you choose to vote for your money to be. But.
Well, we all know that communities and schools that are desirable bring in, like you said, it brings in new families, new businesses, which also in turn helps our economy. So, you know, I think it's all in all, it, you have to look at the whole picture sometimes to know how it would impact the community. So.
What questions do you think? Cause I know you also are a parent and a business owner. But what questions do you, do you have that I might not have answered or?
May I answer part of that?
Please.
Well, should we have ladies first?
Okay, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm, you know, like I said, as a graduate from Eastland High School, you know, first, you know, the, I guess, kind of the historic emotional part of it is change. So that, you know, it's one of the first things you're looking at, how does that impact? The economy's tough right now for a lot of families. I mean, you know, what, you've already touched on that. But then, you know, what, what will that mean? Will the, you know, will, will the programs, will the facilities actually enhance their learning, the capabilities that they have? Not just the structure, meaning like the, the physical building, but the actual, the learning and the technology, things like that, that may take them into being what we talked about.
Absolutely.
College ready, skill ready to enter the workforce. You know, those are things as a parent that I want available to my kids. So.
Absolutely. You had a question.
My question is, are you aware that the assessment program that the county has gone through the past few years is not tremendously popular? And whether or not
You're talking about the values?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm talking about assessment values. And I don't know whether this will be popular or not, but I'll say this, we helped and were very instrumental back during the desegregation program that went very smooth here in the, in the mid 60s. So we want to be a part of progress, but we also represent the rank and file who, some have already indicated to me that the oil price is being what they are. And as she mentioned, there are people hurting. So I don't know how it's going to go. So you have your work and we have our work. We want to be fair because it's our kids and our grandkids that's going to be affected by this.
Absolutely.
So, but I did want you to know that at, at the moment, I perceive that it's not universally applauded. That's my honest opinion. Because I feel like I represent the man on the street and the widow woman living on her social security. Because these are people who are going to be affected by it. It's not going to be drastic. And I love the presentation that you have made because it's reasonable, it's sensible, and I know you've done your homework. And no one can fault that. I'll say that. And I do appreciate your coming and sharing with us the way you have. And I hope that our public will appreciate the open nature that we have here. We're, we're proud of it.
Well, I appreciate it. And, and I agree with, with every concern, with every concern you have. And those, those are the questions I ask myself and, and when you make these decisions and, and, and lead a district with a charge like that, you know, what, one of my simple philosophies that was taught to me by a man named Edon Brown was if it's good for kids, it's our duty to get it done. And, and this is an area where we, we put together a package to put what we think is best for kids. And, and the benefit in my position is, is you educate a community and then that's the beauty of our system. You vote and, and, and verify whether that's the decision the community wants. But I encourage, you know, that's where, let's be informed. You know, I don't want to be a salesman with this, but I would love to sit down and, and show, show, this is A, how we come up with the vision and B, what the impact is going to be. And, and as people contact you, feel free to give them my cell phone number. And, and they can holler at me and, and you and I can always visit.
You bet, you bet.
Well, I'm sure this is not the last time we'll be talking to you. And we thank you for coming today and we'll look forward to hear more progress reports and
Absolutely.
And anything else going on at the school. So.
Absolutely. Well.
Thank you everybody for tuning in to Eastland County.
Well, our, our control man named Jason too. So something's got to be good about this.
It is. It's a great day to me of Maverick.